Good evening. Tonight is Monday, January 12, 2015. Our start time is 7:00 PM. This is a school board meeting for Independent School District 271, Bloomington Public Schools. Start off by taking roll call, and I look around the room here, and it looks like everybody is here. I'm going to ask you all to stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me.
(inaudible) (inaudible) the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
All right, does everybody have a seat? If you need a chair, let us know, we'll try and get one. All right, first thing up on tonight's agenda is the election of officers.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dawn.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and put forward all of our candidates as a slate together, and vote on them together as a slate, the ones that we agreed upon.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Now, for those of you that are in the audience, what Director Scott Steigoff has asked is, instead of going through the election of the chair, the election of the vice chair, the clerk, she's going to nominate all of these positions in one. So then we can go ahead and vote, you'll hear who the nominations are, and you'll see the votes. So we're just, we're just going to try and not take quite so much time with it. I think that's the, that's the intent?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to suspend the rules takes a two-thirds vote.
All right, so we're going to, first, we're going to vote to suspend the, suspend the rules. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now...
Okay. So, I would like to nominate for Chair Maureen Bartolata, for Vice Chair Rick Aliva, for Clerk Nellie Carmen, and for Treasurer Tom Bennett.
Second.
And Rod.
Forget Rod?
And Deputy Clerk.
Oh, Deputy Clerk, Rod.
Yes. Okay. So we have for Chair Maureen, we have for Vice Chair Rick, we have for Clerk Nellie, Treasurer Tom, Deputy Clerk is Rod Zivkovich. All right. By the way, can everyone hear me in the back there? Sometimes one of the speakers isn't.
Not in the very back.
All right. How about right there? Can you hear me now?
Need to be a little closer to them.
No, no laughing, this is very serious. Okay, so, what I'm going to do then is, I'm going to say, "Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?" I'm supposed to say it three times. The nomination counts as one. So, that's what I'm going to do. I'll do that again, now we know what's going on. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? No other nominations? All those in favor of the positions nominated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So then, the new chair is Maureen Bartolata. I'm going to hand the gavel and this chair over. The next meeting, we will do the fruit basket upset. All the officers will take their positions. I'm just going to slide over and I'll let Maureen run the meeting from there.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair, there was a discussion last week about discussing televising the board work sessions. That discussion had been tabled, and so I would like to remove that from the table and add that as number nine on the Part B agenda.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of Rick's motion to remove the televising the sessions to Part B, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
We have a roll call on that, please? We'll start with Rick.
Aye.
And Chair?
No.
So no? I'll, I'll vote aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five to two will be on the Part B agenda. Now, we still need to approve the rest of the agenda as it's proposed. Someone want to make that?
Still move.
Thank you.
And second?
Thank you. All in favor of the agenda with that addition? Addition, not addition? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. First off, we will have recognition of students, staff, and public, and I'd like to introduce our new city manager for the city of Bloomington, Jamie Verbughe. And I will turn it over to the superintendent to read a little introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board members, my pleasure to welcome and recognize and introduce Jamie Verbughe. He's the new city manager. He'll start service the beginning of February. He's currently the city manager for Brooklyn Park. He's been serving there for, since 2008. Previous to that, he was the city manager for the city of Rosemont, and he served there for five years. And prior to that, he's, he's had extensive government experience, serving for the cities of Richfield and Eagan, and also Sterns County. Jamie is married, he has two children.
Three.
Andy reside, yeah, quick, yes. Andy reside in Richfield. Now Jamie values collaboration, and I look forward for him working with our school district. So welcome, Jamie, and please, could you please address the board and the viewing audience?
I will. Thank you, Les. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. It really is a privilege to be here, and I appreciate very much the invitation to come and introduce myself to you, so you can put a face to the name. It's not a great face, but it's going to have to work for now. You know, this is a very exciting opportunity to come lead a community like Bloomington. One of the things that excited me about it frankly is the fact that the school district and the city share the same boundaries. I think there's a lot of opportunity that's going to be gained by that virtue. In Brooklyn Park, where we've had tremendous success over the last seven years, it has been a little bit more challenging because we have three school districts that serve our community. And much of a community's identity is born out of residents' experience with the schools, their engagement and their involvement in the lives of their children. And so the identity of the Bloomington schools is something that the city frankly benefits from, and I'm looking forward to developing that relationship. I can tell you that, in the time I've been in Brooklyn Park, among my most rewarding experiences have been the partnerships that we have forged with our school districts. And they are partnerships that are focused on the success of our youth, combating the conditions that challenge hope in youth, and making sure that all of our students, all of our youth, have opportunities and access to be successful. We have partnered in training opportunities, so the city has extended opportunities to school district staff, the school districts have extended opportunities to our city staff to be trained in a number of different areas, and we've worked together on training for the community. And in conducting meetings to address issues of importance in the community, especially issues of equity and diversity. And so, as I look back on my past experiences and I look forward to what I, I think we're going to do here in Bloomington in the future, I'm looking forward to having a very strong working relationship with Les and the rest of the staff, and certainly working with City Council and working with the school board to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all in the community. So again, thank you very much for having me this evening. I'm looking forward to a very long and successful relationship. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, but I know you have a lot of other business to move on to, so...
Just a quick question, what are the ages of your children, if you don't mind sharing?
So my children are, I'm getting into teenage years now, so that might explain this. My, my oldest, my daughter is 14, I have a son who is 13, and my youngest daughter is six. And we live in, we live in Richfield, as Les said, it's a, it's a very nice, short commute, but it also means that I'm going to be very present in this community. It's one of the things that I place a lot of emphasis on is being visible, being engaged, being involved in the community. And so, I won't make any promises for the first 30 days, but beyond that, I think the community members will probably see a lot of me at a lot of events, a lot of activities, and I'm looking forward to that involvement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a resolution for a proclamation for the Martin Luther King Day Junior. Thank you. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation recognizing January 19, 2015, as Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Second.
Thank you. I'll read the proclamation, and then we will vote. The Bloomington Public Schools joins our nation in recognizing January 19, 2015, as Martin Luther King Junior Day, and whereas Bloomington recognizes that Martin Luther King Junior's life and work reflected the importance of making America a place where equality and justice, freedom and peace could grow and flourish. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomington Board of Education, Independent School District Number 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, does hereby proclaim January 19, 2015, as Martin Luther King Junior Day, and asks all citizens of Bloomington to remember and reflect on the principles of racial equality and nonviolent social change espoused by Martin Luther King Junior, and to rededicate themselves to the philosophy that we can all share the dream for a better life, not only in Bloomington, but also in the world. All in favor of this proclamation, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. And I would like to recognize Sheila Fishman from the Bloomington Human Rights Commission.
So, excuse me, on behalf of the City Council and the Human Rights Commission and the people of the city of Bloomington, I accept this proclamation. And just a word about the Reverend Martin Luther King Junior, we all know what he stood for, we know that he was a wonderful man, and we know that in 1964, at the young age of 35, he was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for his work in preventing or stopping segregation and racial discrimination through nonviolent means. And as the proclamation suggested, and the chairman said, read to us, we are hopeful that in this period of time, when there is so much strife in the world and in the United States, that the Reverend Martin Luther King's vision of peaceful demonstration and peaceful means of achieving equality will prevail, and that some of the violence that we see will end. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize the holiday cards that were sent out by the board this past holiday season. We'd like to thank Stephanie Damlow, who is the Oak Grove Elementary Art Specialist, for having her students in grades one through five provide the original artwork for the 2014 holiday cards. And you can see some of them on the screen. And those cards were sent out by the superintendent and the board members. And so we really appreciate it, they were great, good, cute cards this year. So thank you to her. Next, we will recognize the TIES Exceptional Teachers. The annual TIES Technology Conference was held in December, and two of our Bloomington staff members were honored as exceptional teachers for their efforts in bringing technology to the classroom. I'd like to call upon Andy Boudow and Sean Beverson, our Technology Integration Coordinators, to make some introductions. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki. I am here to speak on behalf of Sam Hostetler, who has awarded the TIES Exceptional Teacher Award this year. Sam is a special education teacher at Kennedy High School. He received the award for a variety of reasons. Sam has a real keen curiosity in the application of technology, the students that he serves. He's keenly interested in how he can use technology to continue to serve those students better. But then, the thing that really makes Sam exceptional is his, his willingness to share that curiosity with his colleagues. And so he's done an amazing job in helping his colleagues grow in their application of technology as he's continued his own exploration. Sam is not here this evening because he is attending class to get his master's degree with a technology certificate, so it's a great honor to honor Sam.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, thank you for having us here. I'd like to introduce Lori Espy. She's a first grade teacher at Ridgeview Elementary School, and she was our second TIES Exceptional Teacher for this year. And much like Sam, there's a variety of reasons why she was chosen. She helps support her building, she's a CT, and she's also a smart mentor. But what I really appreciate about Lori is, she believes that technology, even in her first grade classroom, that kids can be creating and using technology to help enhance their learning. So, so she really likes to get technology in the hands of her students. Along with this, she has a super can-do attitude, and I'm glad that she could be here so that she could be recognized. It was fun, so in December, she did get to attend the TIES conference on the day she was recognized, and it was her first time. So she really enjoyed that, and I'm glad, I'm glad we had that opportunity to send her to that conference.
Well, thank you very much. I, I don't even know if I should admit this, but when I first, I went from a tech, not even a novice, but a tech nobody. When I first interviewed for Bloomington, I didn't know you had to do a tech test. So I walked in the lab and I couldn't even turn on the Apple computer, I had no idea where the on button was, I've only ever worked with a PC. So from there to this is only possible because of Sean and Andy and what the tech department does, because I knew nothing about technology, and through the training and the courses that they've done, I am so sold on it. And when I went to the TIES conference, I actually got my research idea for my master's program, which I am currently in also. And I want to get, do research to get a grant to get an iPad in every first grade grader's hand, not in just my classroom, but going to try for the district. So my professor's going to help me partner with someone that might help me do that. But I thank you, and it's just through these two. They take our in-ain questions and our can't-do this, and they never get mad at us, and they teach us how to use technology and integrate it in our classrooms. So thank you all. And thank you.
Congratulations to Lori and to Sam. Thank you.
And I know Lori Espy. I know she'll get embarrassed if I start talking about her, but she is just wonderful. The way she is right there, she says, "Oh, I went from a nobody to winning this award." I mean, that's just her whole attitude is, is, "I can do it." I, and she puts that, instills that in her classroom, and the kids in the classroom too, that she can take it from anywhere and say, "You can do it, I will help you, I'll do whatever I have to do, I'll stay until seven o'clock at night if I have to, to make you learn." So, thank you again, Lori.
Thank you. This evening, we have representatives from the Somali Parent Network joining us. I'd like to welcome Muna Ahmad, I'm sorry, to the podium. She'd like to say a few words.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Muna Arman. I'm here on behalf of the Somali Parents Network. We have, first of all, I'd like to appreciate and express our gratitude on behalf of Somali Network for giving us this opportunity to be here today, in front of the board, Madam Chair, Superintendent. We really express our gratitude. This is my, member of my network, and our network has been meeting for the last three years, almost three years, and we have a mission, he's going to give you. Our mission is to improve communication between the schools and the Somali families, to promote educational opportunities and encourage the network and its members to participate in the decision-making effect which is going to, you know, improve our students and our children's education. We work together honoring the voices of elders, children, and their family. We honor our culture, our language, our history, and respect others too. We work in collaboration with the district for the well-being of all the communities. All our members are parents with students in Bloomington School District. I'm a parent of five students in the district. We are committed to the best education possible, the future of our children, and the well-being of our communities. We are very grateful to the Department of Equity, her director, Dina Wadi, and Sophia Somali Cultural Lizen for providing us a space to learn and be truly engaged in our children's education. We appreciate all that. Thank you guys. We recently requested some educational information to know how our academic proficiency of Somali students. We had Dr. Dave Hester came to us, and we are very grateful for that, because we did not know the position of our students in the city of Bloomington. But at the same time, understanding that Somali students are at the 70% level is not enough for us. We want to do more for our students, we want them to prosper there and be productive in the community. We have high expectations of our children, this is why we'd like to share with all of you a statement. As a statement of our, we would like to discuss with you in the near future, if you allow me. I will briefly introduce other members of the network.
Hi, everybody, my name is Maureen Al.
Hi, good evening, my name is Sahra Abdi.
Good evening, my name is Absher Mohammed.
Good evening, my name is Nasra Afrah.
And my name is Abdrahim Deary.
Hi, everyone, my name is Abdkhadir Abdi. I'm Vice President of the Somali Network.
Thank you. We are looking forward to continue this dialogue with the board in the near future. Should you have any other questions for us, if you want to know more about us, we have a meeting monthly. Our meetings, our upcoming meetings are February the 10th, March the 10th, April the 14th, May the 19th, for the year 2015. The timings, usually we meet from 6:30 PM through 8:30. Should you have any question, my name is Muna Arman, I'm your contact person, and the Superintendent has my contact for future questions or anything. We really thank you for this opportunity, have a good evening.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for that. Next, I would like to invite the students that are attending for their government class. We have a requirement in our 12th grade government class to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies an essential standard, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So if the students want to come forward and just identify yourselves, and who your teacher is, most of you, or I think all of you are from Jefferson, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm Tanner Beck, and I have Mr. Starlene as a teacher.
I'm Sydney Starlene, and I go Jefferson, and I have Mr. Starlene.
I'm Malik Akpinyong, I go Jefferson, and I have Mr. Starlene.
I'm Cole Zupin, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
I'm Kiana Hollif Jones, and I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
I'm Eric Millpointer, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
I'm Shannon Loom, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
My name's Luke, I go to Jefferson, and I have Mr. Starlene.
I'm Sydney McMullin, I go to Jefferson, my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
I'm Jacob Upton, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
My name's Elise Sagaski, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is also Mr. Starlene.
I'm Colleen Norton, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Starlene.
I am Cody Pervoznik, I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is also Mr. Starlene.
Thank you. At the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on the agenda from any one of the administrative cabinet members that are sitting on the wall, okay? Thank you for coming, and you can go back to your seats. All right. Now we're going to move into the Board of Education organizational information for 2015. We're going to move these a few at a time, so...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through H, all in one. And that should help us move along a little, a little quicker.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. This, A through H includes our board meetings and study sessions, business functions, banking, the signatures on checks and on... functions, banking, the signatures on checks and on contracts, our school board attorney, the insurance agent, architectural service, and construction managers. So, all in favor of A through H, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Now, we're up to number I or letter I.
Madam Chair, the number I or letter I, the Board of Representation, be it resolved that the school board confirms the appointment of Dick Bergstrom to the intermediate District 917 Board, resolved that the school board appoints Jim Sorm as its representative to the Minnesota State High School League. And number three, resolved that the school board appoints Jim Sorm as its representative to the Minnesota School District's Data Processing Joint Board. Number four, be it resolved that the school board appoints Kelly Norman as, Kelly Corman as its representative to the Association. I said Kelly Corman or Nellie Norman, Nellie Corman. I've only done.
Speak slowly.
Practiced it for seven years. Number four, be it resolved that the school board appoints Nellie Corman as its representative to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts and Tom Bennett as the alternate. Number five, resolved that the school board appoints Maureen Bartolata as its liaison with the Minnesota School Boards Association. And number six, resolved that the school board submits to the Minnesota School Board Association names for delegate assembly appointments, Maureen Bartolata, Nellie Corman, and Don Steigov. There are several other appointments to the Board's subcommittees or representations that will be made by the Board Chair for the many and various committees that the school district has. I move this resolution.
Second.
All right. All these other appointments were discussed at last week's study session. So, all in favor of letter I, Board of Representation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we come to Board Compensation.
Madam Chair, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves compensation for school board members at the rate of $600 per month for 2015. This marks no change in compensation since the year 2005.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor of the Board Compensation, please, as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That brings us to part A. Would someone like to move part A?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to the part B agenda. Number one is the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Application Grant. Would someone like to make that?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorizes the administration at Kennedy High School and Jefferson High School to submit a grant application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation requesting financial support for athletics and activities transportation costs. The school board supports the resolution attached to the application.
Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox is here to answer any questions, if we have any on this.
Seconding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did. I said it.
Any questions regarding this resolution? Would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you on behalf of the schools to the Board. This particular grant is for transportation and allows us to assist with activity buses running between our schools, the after-school activity bus, ban drivers, and city bus passes. So, we appreciate your support of that grant going to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. So, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two on our part B is the high school graduation fee.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the graduation fee of $60 per student for Kennedy and Jefferson High Schools for the 2014-2015 school year.
Second. Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent is here again to answer any questions that we might have about this.
Just a quick question. I don't know if I, I might have asked this last year, but it's been a long year and a lot of board meeting information, so forgive me if I'm repeating the question, but does, what exactly does the $60 cover for the graduation fees?
Basically, it covers venue, the rental of the venue, and it covers some of the transportation costs, et cetera, to get equipment back and forth and set up for that. What it doesn't cover is the caps, gowns, diplomas. Those are the pieces by statute it cannot cover.
Do you know the figure on that? What does that cost? For the caps, gowns?
I don't have that with me right now, but we can certainly line item that out and get that for you.
Okay, so the fees pretty much cover the venue and all the other, there's nothing?
All the top and circumstance.
Okay, excellent. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Thank you. Number three is the Operating Transfers Community Service Fund. Someone like to make that resolution?
Madam Chair, I'll read this one. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the operating transfers of $680,404 from the general fund to certain programs accounted for in the community service fund for fiscal year 2013-2014. Second.
Thank you. Our Executive Director of Finance, Rod Zibkovich, is here to answer any questions, or do you want to make a statement first?
Yes. Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members. I have to apologize. These next two resolutions should have really come with the audit that was presented on December 8th, but these two resolutions were not done at that point in time. What this first resolution is, is that we receive some general ed funding in the general fund that is part of programming that is in the community ed fund. So, what we're doing here is transferring those dollars from that revenue generated into the community ed fund. And again, it was part of the 1314 audit.
Any questions?
What would be an example of that? Would that be like Kids Safari goes in the general fund and then we pay it back to community ed? Is that?
No, it's mainly the, the under 21 type programming that is part of the West Metro.
Anyone else? Hearing no other questions, let's vote on this one. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That resolution? Next, we have a resolution regarding committed funds. Someone like to make that?
Go ahead, Jim.
Madam Chair, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves committed funds in the area specified as followed. And I guess at this point, I would ask a question. Are these necessary to read them all, or can I just say, "As stated on the green sheet"? Committed in the area specified as followed, 16 items in the, listed on the agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
Again, these are part of the audit process. Just to give the Board, again, a clarification about these, there are kind of two types of committed funds. There are committed funds that are more generated toward commitments that we have made to individual groups such as the one for wellness dollars. Part of Labor Management oversees the dollars for wellness that we receive. We've committed to them that they would be able to keep whatever dollars they haven't spent. Another category similar to that is third-party billing, band uniforms and instruments, kind of looking at those areas. Other areas that we kind of look at as more of a tier two would be the areas that we talk about, like our referendum, the dollars that we set aside, knowing that we would need those dollars in the future for, as part of budget reductions to offset some of deficit spending. So, get, as we go to the next resolution, I just wanted to clarify with the Board that they're kind of two different levels of these committed funds.
Any questions? Start with Don.
Yeah, I, on number six, seven, and eight, those are all related to transportation, so I'm just curious why there's a balance for transportation building, a separate balance for, just for transportation, and then a third balance for bus purchase. Can?
The one for transportation is basically for its general operation. The, for the bus purchases and also the building is money set aside, that has been set aside for building improvements or buying buses, so that the general fund or their normal operations would not have to be spent on that.
Thank you.
Yes, with regards to item number eight, the $3,299,780 for transportation, Rod and I had a conversation this morning about that and I was asking him, that's pretty much for the fund balance that's in that account. And I was asking, do we need a fund balance that large and can we move some of that money to the general fund? And I don't know if you want me to quote you, if you want to go ahead and re-cant your, what you had to say.
The answer is the Board can at any point in time change the committed funds or uncommit those funds to either the general fund or to another category within transportation.
Okay, and the benefits of having that money in that account, do you want to share what you said with me earlier this morning?
The benefit is that we, because we run transportation separately, we want to, we've over the years made sure that they run that operation like a business, similar to community services and food service. So, it's more of rewarding that group for what good work they've been doing to be able to keep their own funds.
Well, I think we all appreciate what a great job they've been doing over there. But also, we also talked about that money being there next year in case we have to do more budget cuts, that we can use some of that money to offset future budget cuts. And we've talked about how my preference would be that we move that this year and use that to offset budget cuts, because we don't know what the financial picture is going to be next year. It could improve. We might not have to do as big a budget cuts. So, my preference would be more to use some of this money to help offset budget cuts this year. So, I'd actually like to make a motion to amend this resolution on item eight. Instead of it reading $3,299,780, I'd like it to read $1,299,780 for transportation.
Second. Mr. Attorney.
Got a motion and a second? You can debate it.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Sure, Mr. Zibkovich, what's the pros and cons of the resolution as, or the motion as stated?
The current resolution has the committed funds which are in the audit report. These are how they're stated currently in the audit report. Otherwise, I mean, technically as a way of the funds themselves, they're all pretty much the same pot of money. So, it's to make an adjustment. It's now, I guess I would ask the question of Director Bennett is that are we looking that we would be reducing or looking to reduce our adjustments this next year based on that?
Would that have an impact of the amount of money we would have to cut? I think that's what I'm looking at.
Even though it's a one-year or a one-time savings?
Yeah. So, I think if we have to do budget cuts next year, I mean, you were telling me that we could use part of this fund to minimize those cuts. I would rather use that money this year and the next year when we're doing budget cuts, you could say, "Well, we can't use the money from the transportation fund because we used that last year." So, because I mean, a lot of things can happen between now and next year with our financial picture. It's already greatly improved since June and, you know, our enrollment could go up 20 or 30 kids. We could, you know, the governor's already said that education is going to be his top priority, so we could get a larger-than-expected increase in fund balance. So, it's a lot easier to restore a fund balance than it is to restore budget cuts. And my preference is to do the least amount of budget cuts as possible. And if this can help us get to that end, then I think it's a worthwhile endeavor.
If that's the choice of the Board then.
Director Sorm?
Yeah, I'd speak against this particular resolution because we still have two more workshops where we're going to be discussing the budgeting, right-size budgeting in the future. And since this one was already established to make our balances in the, in the audit, I would, I would think it would be a little bit not, not proper to all of a sudden come back and do that. I think with the thought of cutting that particular amount can be brought up during the workshops or study sessions and as an option at that time. But I would not support making a determination right now at this point tonight.
Director Leva?
So, is what Director Sorm is saying, would we be able to come back to this in two weeks anyways?
Yes. We, it's something that the Board would be at the end of next year or next calendar year. You decide these categories of what would be committed at that point in time. So, there's, there's opportunity. All it's saying is how it's categorizing it today and how it categorized it on the audit.
And it's our prerogative to change it at any correct that we want to?
There can be a resolution at any point in time to change it for this next year.
So, I think in light of that, I would probably say we just keep it how it's stated now and then through our process of right sizing the budget, we could always come back to it and say, "Hey, you know what? Maybe we should cut into some of these other fund balances at that point."
Just to clarify, the audit was accepted by the school board. The audit contains these adjustments, these committed funds. So, technically, the Board needs to approve this resolution as is to align with audit findings. Later, could be next week, it could be changed. An uncommitment could be done anytime during the school year. So, as has been discussed, as we go through the right sizing budget process, a motion could be made to free up the funds.
Madam Chair? With that information being shared, I'll go ahead and withdraw my motion to amend.
Okay.
One second. It's all required.
Second. All right. So, any further discussion on this amendment, the original amendment? Hearing none, we will vote on that. All those in favor of the original amendment, or the original resolution on committed funds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have a resolution regarding the 2014-15 budget with mid-year budget adjustments.
I'll read this one in. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves adjusting the 2014-2015 budget for all funds by increasing revenues by $26,501,890. And that is, includes $23,400,000 from bonds sold for all facilities after original budget was adopted and increasing expenditures by $2519,777. Second.
Yeah? Do you want to address it?
This is something that was discussed with the Board on the December 15th study session. We provided information on all the funds and all the adjustments within those funds.
Any discussion?
Just on the backside of the resolution is the proposed revised 2014-15 budgets, which kind of explains it, shows all of that there. So, that's helpful. Thank you, Rod.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. One more for the Director of Finance. The target for right sizing the budget, we have a resolution.
Madam Chair? Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the target for right sizing the budget for 2015-16 at an amount that will result in the ending fund balance of the general fund, less transportation, capital health and safety, and capital projects levy, being no less than 5% of operating expenditures. The ending fund balance will include both unassigned and tier-two committed fund balances.
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to address it?
This was, again, something that was talked about at the December 15th meeting. This was again, something that was talked about at the December 15th meeting. One thing I will, I will add to it is that as I talked to Director Bennett today, there was some confusion and I can see the understanding of where it says being no less than the 5%. I think there was some thought that it might be that we could make reductions larger than, to make it a 6%, 7% based on that terminology. What we heard the board say from our study session is that the board wanted to have a 5% fund balance at the end of, with the budget for this year. So I just want to have clarification with the board that it would be that the budget that is being presented to the board in June would be, have a 5% fund balance. We cannot guarantee with both enrollment unknown, negotiations unknown, and also legislation unknown at that point in time that a revised budget would also be at the same point. It could be more, it could be less. The same thing with the audit, it could be more, it could be less. But what we have agreed to and what we believe with this resolution is stating that we will provide a original budget or adopted budget for the board to approve that would have the balance at 5%.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I think what my, my concern with, with this was when we were at the study session, the, the board members are quite clear that we want to cut a minimum amount that we could do to get to 5 million or to 5%. And I think this is pretty much saying, well, so we don't want to cut anything more than that. So that's the maximum we want to cut. And this is pretty much saying, this is the, the minimum we want to cut. So the district could cut, you know, 10 million, 12 million, and we would still be in line with this resolution. So I think that we should change this resolution instead of saying no less than 5%. We could change it to something saying between 5% and 5.5% or to say, to change it to where it says being 5%. And I kind of wanted to open it for discussion to see what other board members felt about this before making a motion to amend it.
Madam Chair. Rod, what would that language look like?
Pardon?
How would, how would we phrase this to?
To alleviate my concern?
To, yes, yes. There you go. To assuage Tom's, Tom's concern.
I guess the, the way for the, would change it is it would take out the terminology of being no less than, that just to say that being 5%. But I think also that we'd want to have something in there is the budget fund balance of the general fund or adopted fund, budget of the fund balance of the general fund would be 5%.
Okay, are we, I think we have time. Are we willing to wordsmith this evening?
Yeah, as he said, if you want to.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's go if we can from being no less. What is, what is the resolution, the amended or amended resolution say after the words being no less? And if you want to take out no less?
You just change it to of. Target for right sizing the budget and amount that will result in the ending fund balance of 5%. Me to that effect, right?
Yep. Someone needs to make a motion to amend?
Yeah, and so then.
The wording.
And then I guess there's a spirit of what we're saying and like the actual what we're saying, I mean if it's like 5.1, are we going to have a fit, right? So I mean, do we want, like you had said, do we want to say between 5 and 5 and 1/2? Or, or if we just say 5, is that good enough? I don't, I don't know how this works. This is the first time I had to do it.
Yeah, now's the time for that language. So we'll, we'll pencil it in.
I would, I would just add, as long as the board is, understands what the revised budget or the audit could look like, I'd be fine with just having it at the 5%.
Okay, so if we would make a motion then, or what am I?
Motion to amend.
A motion to amend to say be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the target for right sizing the budget for 2015-16 at amount, at an amount that will result in the ending fund balance of the general fund less transportation, capital, health and safety and capital project, capital projects levy of 5% of operation, operating expenditures. The ending fund balance will include both unassigned and tier-two committed fund balances. I believe I said that correctly.
Second.
Mr. Superintendent.
Clarification. I like the language, I'm okay with the language. If we can add to the second sentence, well, in the first sentence, where it says results in the ending fund balance of the general fund, where we see that section, we can put in the budgeted ending fund balance because there's three ending fund balances that Rod just identified. Budgeted, revised budget, and audit fund balance.
And I guess I would add adopted budget because you have the revised budget and the, just to make sure it's clear.
Right. Okay.
You accept that, those changes?
Be amended.
You got it?
Your kids are getting a great lesson.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the target for right sizing the adopted budget for 2015-16 at an amount that will result in the ending fund balance of the general fund less transportation, capital health and safety and capital projects levy of 5% of operating expenditures. The ending fund balance will include both unassigned and tier-two committed fund balances. Did I say it right that time?
Could we get it all in there?
I mean, at the end of the day, no matter what we say, they'll come back with the budget and we'll either approve it or not approve it, right? So that's why, I'm not sure if it really, really matters, but.
I think it's important that this resolution reflects the board's will. And I think we're quite adamant that we don't want to, want to cut this far and no further.
Right. So I think if, if we put it the way it is there, I think we're probably doing good.
Yes.
You're okay?
All right. How's that for wordsmithing for seniors?
That was quick. I'll in favor of the amended.
Was there a second to that?
I. Second.
Second to the amended amendment?
Okay, so we're going to vote first on the amended, the amended resolution. All in favor of the amended resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So now we vote on the.
You've now amended the resolution.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Now we're voting on this resolution as amended. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Thank you. That moves us to number seven, the district strategic plan refresh. And that is, there's a resolution for that?
Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the refreshing of the district strategic plan vision and strategic direction. Refresh vision will read, am I going to read this whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay. The vision of the Bloomington Public School is to create pathways to graduation for all learners and prepare them for the next level of study, to graduate and to enter college or a career with necessary skills to be successful. Each learner will have a personalized growth plan that prepares them to meet the following milestones. Preschool ready, ready for kindergarten, reading by third grade, middle school ready, high school ready, college and career ready. The refreshed strategic direction will read maximize student growth and close the achievement gap by delivering instruction, educational programs designed to help learners meet or exceed pathways to graduation milestones. Establish a comprehensive system of learning supports to help overcome barriers to learning and ensure management focuses resources, staff and programs to sustain the district strategic plan.
Second. Thank you. And I would like to ask the superintendent to address this.
Madam Chair, School Board members, at the December 1st, 2014 Pathways to Graduation Public Meeting, administration presented the district's pathway to graduation vision. Administration also presented strategic directions to bring to life this pathways to graduation vision. The School Board reviewed and discussed this refreshed strategic plan with these, with this vision statement and the strategic directions at their December 15th study session. Administration recommends that the board support this refreshing of the strategic plan. I'm happy to report that last week Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox and I met with Minnesota Department of Education Commissioner Brenda Cassilius, and she took that opportunity to recognize and thank the district and the school board for updating our strategic plan to align with the world's best workforce goals. So she knows what we're doing and she's very appreciative of the action being taken by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on this resolution?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Superintendent, on this, on the new strategic plan that we have that we will be putting out on the web and everywhere else, my microphone is doing deadly things tonight. Nowhere does this have a date or does, should it say on there somewhere the date and board approved on such and such a date?
That is our practice, we'll, we'll add it.
On the document itself.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the district, district strategic plan refresh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, and that brings us to board goals, mid-year progress report. And I would like to, excuse me?
Item added.
Yeah, number nine. That'll be number nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Never mind.
Former Chair Bergstrom would like to.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll take this one. This is a, just a quick run over what, what the board accomplished through our session last year. We had five different goals, establish and implement a board professional development evaluation plan. We had four of six professional development sessions. We have two remaining to develop a plan to review and maintain policies at a minimum of every five years. Our target goal was 20 policies and my memory says that we're somewhere around 26, 27, 28. So we worked our way through 28 policies. Also to create a pathways advisory committee that has been completed, review and update the school board's community engagement plan. So far, we're, we're finished, we just need a, a year-end assessment. And establish an annual school board legislative plan. And that has been completed. So I just, I wanted to very quickly go over the goals that we set for ourselves last year and give a progress report and just say thank you for, for all the, the energy and effort that went into making these things happen. There's a lot of conversation that goes into these particular goals, forming them, agreeing on them, and then putting them into action. So just a real quick update and, and a thank you to all those involved.
Thank you. Next we'll move to number nine, which was the discussion about televising our study sessions. Director Oliva, did you have a motion or?
So I, yeah, like I said, this is the first time I've had to do this. So I guess I'll move that we only televise the regular board meetings and discontinue televising our board work sessions for a period of, like it's to be 11 months and we could re, or 12 months and that we have this conversation again next November at the first meeting that we have in November. So that way the board can then evaluate, as we did this time, how we believe progress is going.
Is your second?
Second.
Thank you. We have some discussion?
I was just going to say the proper procedure for pulling it off the table, was that adequate? Or do we need to have a special motion that says, hey, remove, bring back on the table?
You already did that earlier.
Earlier when it made the agenda amendment. All right.
So, okay. Before the board discusses? Excuse me, before? Okay. I would like to now invite Wendy Marchek, who is our BFT president. She asked to address this item before it was on the agenda. And so now that it's on the agenda, you get to speak now. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Fuchitaki, Chair Bartalata, I'm sorry, I had Bergstrom still, school board members and listening audience. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to address you tonight. As you already mentioned, my name is Wendy Marchek and I'm the president of the Bloomington Federation of Teachers. During the school board workshop last Monday, January 5th, the board had a discussion regarding the continued televising of board workshop sessions and whether it is prudent to continue this practice. I would like to share my perspective on behalf, from behalf of the teachers. Bloomington schools are going to make some tough decisions in the coming weeks regarding budget cuts. The information that is shared at workshops is the very information that helps the board make their decisions. The information helps the listening audience understand why these decisions are made. Often, the workshops are more valuable to the listening audience than the actual official school board meetings. Community engagement is also important to Bloomington. The broadcast of workshops is a low-cost opportunity to have another way to engage our community and to let the Bloomington public know of our great schools and all the programs that we do offer, since we highlight them at many of the workshop sessions. When teachers are challenged to find ways to engage in the community with websites, posting homework and grades, and creating opportunities to dialogue with students and the community online, it only seems natural that the board would follow the same standard. I understand that other school boards in other districts do not broadcast their workshops. But Bloomington can be a forward-thinking school district. After all, we have new projects going on right now that have never been attempted by other districts. We have the College and Career Academy in development phases right now. We are known for being innovative. Why can't we be innovative in the ways we connect with our community? Using media is a great way to do this and it is low cost. It costs us nothing. Last, please do not make a decision to turn off the cameras in order to make the teachers feel more comfortable when presenting at workshops. Teachers are in front of an audience all day. That's our work. Trust me, we are not thinking about the cameras when we are sharing our work with you. We are passionate about our work and we would not let the fact that we are being broadcast on a cable TV show stop us from showing you what innovative things we're doing in our very classrooms. Now is not the time to turn off the cameras. Budget cuts are coming and the public needs to see the process as transparent. It is not that we think you are hiding anything. It is about sharing information with our public, our constituents and our customers. It is engagement. Why would we take a step backwards? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's have some discussion.
Madam Chair, I almost had to, had to stop. I did have to stop myself from applauding. And now that the students are here, it would be a good thing if we had TV cameras in the classroom so that we could actually see what the teachers were teaching and how the students were responding. Would they appreciate that or would they not? I think using that analogy that this, that the teachers are in front of a class all of the time isn't, isn't germane to the issue of, of what we have. We have a public, originally workshops and study sessions were intended for the board to receive information from the administration about internal operations and what's happening so that the board, new members especially, could become aware of what was going on in an informal setting where we gather around a table or a couple of tables and we talk about certain issues. Then, when the subjects are brought up, then they come before a public meeting and they are addressed as they are now. Where action is taken, no action is ever taken at a study session. All we're doing is learning. So it's, it's, it's necessary sometimes to have it be an informal session rather than a formal, formal session. Another concern I have too is with our social media, the way it's getting now, anything that can be taken from a board meeting or any public television can be put on YouTube or can be distorted in such a way that somebody can use it to a disadvantage of the particular people. Students are well aware of the, of the consequences of Facebook and social media issues that occur. And we continue as a district to try and deal with all of those things to make sure there's certain privacy that's kept. I, I've been through the, through the sessions of having them televised and not having them televised and frankly, it's. and frankly, it's a little more productive when we have informal sessions where we have whoever come and talk to the board and explain certain issues without having to go into great details. That's usually what a public board meeting is for, is to hear about some of those things that the public then can relate to. We don't do any online or any other types of activities during our workshop sessions. It's just a matter of getting information from administration. So I speak in favor of not televising for a while.
Anyone else?
Yeah. You know, definitely, as we enter this time of rightsizing the budget, and not only that, but the fact that we have this commitment to our community to provide information, especially those who are not able to come to the meetings, and who are able to watch it from home, or watch it later on, you know, a different day. You know, I'm just very concerned that we're taking this step, like Wendy said, we're going backwards. We promised people to do more about communication, to provide more information, and here we are, going backwards. We're taking this away from the community. This is not for us, this is not for our administration. It is for the community. Providing the televised sessions, it's for the community, so definitely not gonna go for a yes on this one. I say, let's keep them on. Keep the sessions on, televised.
Anyone else?
Well, we've had lots of conversation on this, so I'll be brief. I think that from Ms. Marchek's statement, one thing that hit true with me was the, this is not the time to do it. We don't turn the cameras off a week before we start talking about cutting budgets. I mean, we want to say, it's not about transparency, that is about transparency. When we're cutting the budget, all of a sudden, we turn the cameras off, what message are we sending to the community? That we'll televise all this, but when it gets to the important stuff, we're gonna turn the cameras off, and you guys don't get to see it. So, I want everyone to think about that, and let's not do this. Let's keep the cameras on, it's not impacting our ability to have study sessions. I don't buy the argument at all. I'm gonna be the same, everyone who's open and honest is gonna be the same, whether the cameras are on or the cameras are off. So let's keep the cameras on, let's engage our community, and let's just keep it going the way it is. That's all I have to say.
Yes, without sounding like a broken record. As Director Bennett has mentioned, we've had this conversation several times. I've also, all the arguments that have been made, I can see it both ways. When I was not on the board, I was not able to attend the meetings on Monday nights, and so I value being able to see them on BECTV.org afterwards, and I found some of them on YouTube also. I'm also one of the people that thinks that, well, if you turn it off, well, then you must be hiding something. However, they are open meetings, people still could come, the media can still come, we can still see the board minutes, and what I'm saying is that, when I first got here, I was not going to turn off the cameras. I said, it's my first action as a board member, it's not going to be to change the way that we're doing business. However, over the course of the past year, people that have been here the longest, our facilitator that we hired, I feel like, only being on the job for a year, I should take the advice of the people that have been here longer, and at least see what happens. Yeah, so that's, that's just where I stand with it.
Madam Chair, I'll try and be brief, I know that we've had this conversation for quite some time. My, I originally made this resolution last August, I'm sorry, motion. The original intent was to help facilitate conversation, not to take an opportunity away, and I'm not trying to take away an opportunity for anyone to listen in. My 86-year-old mother is blind as a bat, deaf in one ear. She won't admit to being deaf in one ear. What she does is she turns the radio on, and turns it up loud, and listens. I'm not asking to take away the audio recorder, I'm asking to turn the television camera off. I'm asking that for the people that cannot advocate for themselves, the people that come to me and talk to me when they're shaking, when their lips, their lip is quivering, saying, "Thank you, thank you for giving me a voice," because I am not, for whatever reason, able to do that. I'm trying to facilitate a conversation by removing what I think is a roadblock. Just picture the camera as an orange cone that you see on the side of the road, if it's in the way, you get out and move it. That was my original intent, that is my intent this evening. I hope to support this, my vote would be yes, but that's why. I originally made this motion back in August, I put a year time limit on it, with "Come back to the conversation in 11 months." The reason I did that was so that this board would vote on it, so it wasn't passed to another board, there are elections, it's fault. Other people wouldn't have to undo, if they chose to, what we did. I think that's what Rick is saying when he says, "We'll come back to it in November." We will make this choice, a year is long enough to see whether this is working or it isn't. The original intent was never meant to hide anything, never. Now, I know that there is not a good opportunity, there isn't a good time to do this, but I was willing to champion a very quiet voice, and I'll stand firm with that. If you want to blame somebody, blame me. My last letter, my last name has nine letters, starts with a B. Okay, if you need someone to blame, someone to be upset with, go ahead and blame me. That's all the speeches I have for tonight, thank you.
I know it seems like we're repeating our conversations here, we've been around on this a few times, but I just want to say once again that I want to keep the cameras on. I just do not see how we can spend money on family engagement and engaging our community, and then here's one of the ways we do it, and we want to turn them off. I just, that makes no sense to me, when we're trying all the time to figure out new ways to engage people with the schools. The other thing is, I don't really understand how, if they know it's being recorded, how it makes them more comfortable not to have the camera on, because they're still being recorded, everything they, I don't really understand that there's a lot of difference between those two. And I just, I feel like that, I also agree that this is not the time to be doing it, but even if we weren't doing budgets, I just don't think any time is the time to do it, I think they should stay on. I think that people that, you know, maybe they don't watch them live right now, I understand that, but people should be able to go online and look up when a decision was made, and when we discuss something, and how we reached that decision before the board meeting, and they can go back, and they can look at something two months ago and say, "Oh, there's that conversation, now I know how they got there." So I just think it's one of those, one of those things that helps people understand this process better by keeping them on. Thank you.
I just have my last comment. I just cannot understand why the board would turn the cameras off, if we have this responsibility once again, and I'm also that broken record, being for a few number of months. But we have this responsibility with our taxpayers. They are providing the money for us to be here, they're the ones that support our school district, when we're trying to pass referendums, when we're trying to bring programs, and lots of different things. We always go to our taxpayers, and they are always there for us. So why are we taking this away from them now? Whether they watch it or not, they are putting the money for all of us to be able to be here, for us to be able to do the best we can for those kids that are coming here. And so, during this very specific time that we're going through, we have to turn the camera off, when we're talking about numbers, and the reasons why the numbers are gonna be this way or that way, the decisions that we're making. Now, there is a community that is extremely supportive, and is the senior community. They are not able to come here, they're able to watch it, and I know, I've heard many of them say, "I do watch it, I do." So, thank you for televising it, because then I have the opportunity to watch it, I don't have to worry about me moving, you know, all the way to the district to go see you. So, definitely, let's think about these people, the people that elected us, the people that we told we were gonna do a lot of different things to engage our community in a meaningful way. So if we're spending thousands of dollars in family and community engagement, why are we taking this away from our taxpayers?
I guess the final thing that I'll say then is, the question that I keep asking myself is, how does either keeping them on or turning them off affect my ability to direct policy, or resolutions, or do any of the work that we do? Now, to me, it doesn't seem like it would make any difference, but I've had a state legislator tell me, "Turn off the cameras, you're gonna have a more effective meeting." I had a board member from another board say, "Turn off the cameras, you're gonna have a more effective meeting." We had our facilitator that we hired to come talk to us say, "Turn off the cameras, you're gonna have a more effective meeting." We've had our historian say, "Turn the cameras off, you'll have a more effective meeting." And so, I think the board, the community elected us to get our work done. And so, if, and I, what I'm asking myself is, okay, well, will my work be more effective or more meaningful if I keep the cameras on? Well, it will be more accessible to the greater community, but I have all these other people who I consider to be more expert at this than I, saying, "Well, but if you turn them off, you're gonna have a more effective meeting, you're gonna get your work done better, people are gonna appreciate the results more." And so that's why I say, you know what? I'll listen to you, we'll try it for a year, and if I don't see any difference, then we can revisit the issue. So that's how I see it. I don't see it as, I want to try to be sneaky or hide anything. I see it as, if someone elected, you know, someone donates to my campaign, is paying to have me do a job, they're expecting to do that job to the best of my ability, and the information I'm getting suggests that I will be able to do my job better, or we would all be able to do our jobs better if they weren't televised, so that's it.
All right, one more, you two, and then we'll go ahead.
I just kind of have a question while we're talking about this, because if we turn them off, and we keep talking about then, we're gonna be able to be more effective. How are we gonna judge what's more effective? We're already meeting all of our goals that we set, we're already doing everything, so I'm thinking, so how are we gonna come to conclusion, when we have that conversation next fall, what criteria we're gonna use is more effective than we already are? It's just a thought, as we were speaking about this, how are we gonna decide that?
Director Sar.
Yeah, I'll go back to the original intent of the workshops was for us, the board members, to hear from central administration, other schools. On occasion, we have gone to a middle school in their technology center, and we've had various teachers come and talk about how they're using technology. So we were away from this setting, and we were in the school. If you want to learn about Jefferson, go to Jefferson's Activity Center, if you want to, or Media Center. If you want to learn about any of the other schools, you can go to those schools and find out. We used to be able to bring all of the school people here and talk about the programs. They got to be more effective to go to the site, the transportation building, anywhere else that we have in the district to learn about what's going on. And that is important to us as board members. Then we bring, if there's a report needed, then we bring the information back to a public board meeting where we have. We've had many times where we've had town hall meetings, information meetings on a variety of subjects, where we've opened them up and televised them under a different structure than a workshop or a board meeting. Those can still be done, but to have a small workshop or a board session, and have it be meaningful for all the participants to participate, it usually is best done and more effective in an informal setting without the cameras.
I'm gonna call for a vote, and I think we should do roll call, just because. We'll start with Director Stigga. Director Stigga?
Want to, can you restate his motion?
Your motion is to turn off the...
The motion is to discontinue televising our board study sessions, and continue televising our board...
Meetings.
Meetings, our regular board meetings.
For one year.
For, yeah, for a period of one year until next January, and I would, do we need to have, say that we're gonna have a discussion in November? Yeah, so, and then in November, we will have a discussion, at the first meeting in November, to discuss the progress.
Possible new members, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
So, we will stop broadcasting workshops for a period of 10 or 11 months, and we'll just come back and revisit at that time.
I think the motion was to stop for a year and discuss it in November.
Oh, okay. All right. The way it was stated, thank you. Next, we have board member reports. Someone like to make a report?
I'll go first. It's been a year since I've been able to go first.
You'll go first.
Okay. Had, attended a board meeting for intermediate 917, and among other things, we went over the superintendent's contract. That's done a little bit different than it is here, and that was an interesting meeting. Had a parent advisory meeting, the December parent advisory meeting. That was a lot of fun, it always is, and it's good conversation to hear what's going on in parent advisory. Also attended a PTSA council meeting over at Normandale Community College, that was just, just this last week. Had, managed to get over to Jefferson to experience the pizza. So I, we have two Jefferson students left, I do actually eat in your cafeterias, and I went over to taste the pizza, and the salad, and whatever else was with it, and I was full at the end of the meal, I thought it was tasty. Want to say thanks to the kitchen staff over there, for being, always being so polite, and dealing with the students who are a pleasure to deal with, I'm sure. Also went over to Jefferson's show choirs, their spaghetti dinner, that was just the other night, and for the third year in a row, I did not win the 40-inch flat-screen television. So I put an X on the back of my ticket, and they still didn't draw it. I had an opportunity to attend Kennedy Boys Swim Meets down at St. Kate's, was just down in Red Wing. Want to mention that there's a meet coming up on Thursday, and then again on Saturday. A lot of fun, these guys are, if you want to see a fun group of people, a team that really, really tries hard, come watch the swim team. I know that the girls' swim team tries as hard as the boys', but I just happened to be at the boys' swim team. I also want to make, mention that a student sent me a letter, a student at one of our middle schools, I won't, I won't share which one, sent a letter to me, typed it out, it's a page and a half, and this student is advocating for later start times. They cited an article in the New York Times from 2009 that says that, when you're younger, your body clock sets you to sleep later, that's why, that's a good excuse for you to stay up late, that's what all the kids tell their parents, and of course, they're really tired in the morning, so they want to sleep later. So this student did a very wonderful job of articulating the pros and cons of starting school later. So I want, I want all the students, and the two that are remaining here tonight, to know that when you do contact us, we do actually read what you send us. And I read every word, and if I get it before a meeting, I'll share it in my board member report. So I want to thank this student, if they're watching, for sharing this insight, and I'll pass it on to the... pass it on to the district and let them take some action if they so desire. That, I believe that ends my board member reports.
Thank you. Don? No?
Sure. Right before break, I had a chance to go to Oak Grove Elementary. They were having a group sing-along and the highlight of that was the teachers actually had rehearsed one song and got up and did one song together and all the students cheered. So I thought that was very cute. I also did some classroom visits because they were doing their parties then while I was there. I also attended the PTSA at Normandale College, so as they're a partner with our new college and career academy, so the presentation was there and the PTSA was there. That will be my new committee, so I attended the first one last week. And I also had a chance to go to Jefferson to the spaghetti dinner over the weekend and, you know, enjoyed the shows, enjoyed the dinner and seeing people at the silent auction and stuff. But I have to say, one of the things that I found most interesting about it is I went to eat after late, like towards the end, so there was a lot of people in there, and I noticed some students all sitting at the table and I thought, hmm, I recognize some of those kids. Those are Kennedy's RIG students are here. And so I happened to mention to the Jefferson parent where I was sitting that, oh yeah, I see there's some RIG students here. And they said, wow, and people think that there's this big rivalry between the schools and look that they're here supporting them. And so I just wanted to say, I think it's great that I see Jefferson students supporting Kennedy students and Kennedy students supporting Jefferson students. I also saw some Kennedy parents there, so I just thought it was great to see that community support for both schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Chair Youth Advisory Committee Task Force, met with incoming member Dick Bergstrom and outgoing members Jim Sorm and Nellie Corman. We discussed possible agenda items for the February 9th and March 23rd meeting with the youth. The direction we're looking at right now, nothing is 100% in stone, is looking at a couple of groups, possibly Bloomington United, Community Education Services to come and have some engagement with the students to discuss community opportunities and engaging with the students in extracurricular activities in the district.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to meet with Joyce Esther, President of Normandale Community College, a couple of weeks ago. We had a very interesting and good conversation about, you know, different ways of continuing to strengthen our partnership between the college and our schools. And I found out that our administration keeps a very close relationship with Normandale and they're always in communication, very well informed. We talked about some certain points of interest that have to do with our future students, not only the ones that we currently have in the high schools that might be probably attending Normandale College in the future, but also future students, little kids and adults as well. So those points would be points that I will bring to Superintendent Fujitaki, but I understand that you are in constant communication anyway, so I'm sure you're very well aware of all those. And I also attended the play, third, fourth, and fifth grade play at Hillcrest Community School, "Don't Stop Believing." Very well done, very fun, and we had one of our city council members attending. Our city council, Cynthia Abrams, was there and she loved it too, so it was great.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure, Madam Chair, me, I just want to go on public record to apologize to Nellie for mispronouncing her name before. It's not, it's not the first time, but I just want to make sure, Nellie Corman, Nellie Corman, remember it.
Kelly Norman.
But Kelly Norman is cute. I just have a few things to say. January 27th is the deadline for submitting volunteer or group nominations for the Bloomington United for Youth Recognition Program, which you can get the nomination form at Bloomington Youth.org. I wanted to say that the next education foundation meeting, I found out it will be March 25th. So if you're, I'm not sure where yet. We do sometimes rotate locations, so I'll let you know the location, but that will be it. It's usually 11:30 to 1:00. As one of my first unofficial duties as board chair, we did neglect to name a board historian when we voted earlier and so as my unofficial duty, I would like to name Director Sorm as our board historian.
I certainly have homework now, don't I? Unbelievable.
Next, I'd like to publicly thank our former chair, Dick Bergstrom, for an unprecedented year of board leadership. We worked well together, all of us, and we accomplished all of our goals and for that, Director Bergstrom deserves a lot of the credit. Under Director Bergstrom's guidance, we were able to collaborate on a wide variety of issues that will improve the educational experience of students across Bloomington and I look forward to continuing the spirit of collaboration into the upcoming year. Thank you again, Dick. That's out for me.
Okay. Madam Chair, school board members, I have two topics, both about school board sessions. The first is a reminder that we have a study session next week, Tuesday, January 20th, and the topic is rightsizing the budget process. I need a motion to establish a closed session for that same date, Tuesday, January 20th, and that closed session will follow, will follow the conclusion of the study session and that'll be to discuss negotiations. Let me have a motion, please.
So moved.
All in favor of the closed session after our study session on January 20th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business? Hearing none, we will adjourn to our closed session in the next room in room 601.